Good evening. It's now six o'clock. I'd like to call the board of June 6th, regular council meeting. Lloyd Roberts, Lloyd Guss, and Amy Henson.
Thank you. Back as you like. Good evening, Heavenly Father. You know, Father, that your Spirit is always with us. A few months ago, we decided to personally invite you, Father, to join us during our meetings right here in Miller Beach. I'm confident that I brought a smile to your face, and I pray that we do everything possible to make you happy. Our citizens, our staff, our mayor, and our council members are often tasked with making decisions for our city. And Father, you have blessed us with free will to make many of our decisions. I pray that we all remember that most of our important decisions always seem to work out best. Will we go to you first, Father, to pray for direction? Father, please be with our law enforcement and all our first responders and keep them safe from harm as they serve our city. Father, we come to you this evening. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us, Father, to engage in meaningful discussion and help us all to grow closer and nurture the bonds of our community. Make every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and your glory. Fill us with your grace, Father, as we make decisions that will probably affect the citizens of our beautiful city, and continue to remind us that all that we do here this evening, all that we may accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth for the greater glory of you, Father. I love you, Father, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, please, Lord, have questions.
I'm just, my, I'm a Saint American, dear Father, who do Christians, who am a God, and the devil, who are the creatures of sin.
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingston.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Ruefler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Mayor Dave Gaddis was unable to attend. Thank you, Patty. First item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Great, great. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Any further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved as presented. Item two on the agenda is citizens' comments. You will have three minutes to present anything in topic that's not on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak, you can do so by raising your hand or pointing to the phone. Any citizen comments? Okay. I agree, and this is a presentation of the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. The Law and Order Department report.
Good evening, Council. Starting from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. These reports are for the month of April. There were 716 events in the month of April with 799 units responding. Majority of calls were directed patrols, traffic stops, house checks, contacts, traffic control, and illegally parked vehicles. There were a total of five rescuing in April on this community of charges primarily revolving around minor traffic infractions. There were 140 citations or warnings issued, which 23 of them were for parking, and there were no crashes in the city in April.
Any other questions?
Uh, it seemed like assaults were, were they, uh?
I'm sorry?
Assaults seemed to, uh?
That's you all under the domestic.
Sorry. So they were like domestic laws or?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. All right, you guys go back to code room for your monthly report.
Good evening, this Vice Mayor, City Councilmember, staff, citizens. Steve Packer for the record. In my monthly code report, again, we are still doing some investigations as far as permits to nonlicensed people doing work within the city. A lot of them, we have a, uh, we've been doing a lot with the cleanup around the city. Our major one, which we've been working on for about a year, is on 17th Street where the house was sold and the home was cleaned up. And now we're just waiting for a permit to do some work in there. The other thing that we're doing and we're focusing on since Hurricane Susan started was some of the docks within the city limits. If I'm not mistaken, we already got three letters going out and another three for, uh, to get the homeowners to repair their docks. One that I'm very happy to say is was on ALIDA. That has been going on since December 21st. So when you see my report next month, you'll see that they finally got a crew out there and they're replacing the dock. So other than that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's fine down here. Unpainted, we weren't paying on a house. What about, um, citizens that say have pressure-treated lumber, unpainted, um, you know, attached to the front of the house or on the side of the house?
Uh, is there one in particular?
Not right now. I said it's asking right now.
Well, again, we'll look at that. I'll get with the city manager and also over there to, you know, assess that. But yeah, if it's, if it looks dilapidated or whatever, then yes, we can, we can take care of that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I have a question regarding the docks. How are we monitoring them? Are we using the sheriff's vote now?
Yes, we are. I'm trying to go out at least once a month with them, and again, it's, it's scheduled to change. This Sunday, we're trying to go out again because I'll be back on Sunday. And I'm gonna go with one of the green units and just again start looking at some of these areas. Not only with the docks, but seeing if there's any other unscheduled work that's being done to some of these homes.
And this may originally not be a question for you, but if someone pulls a dock permit, how long do they have to redo the project? And that stands for like full permit to us? Will it seem to be over for?
I believe it's one year, if I'm not mistaken. The problem that they're having is getting these companies to come in and do the work. Because there's not a lot of dock companies that people are using out here. And the issue is getting somebody to come out and give an estimate and then finding out. Like we had the one on ALIDA, we found out they weren't even licensed in this county, so they had to get their license, you know, before they could do that. So it's, it's from the time they pull the permit, I believe they have one year to get the work done.
And that's the same for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Also, just to add, it doesn't leave the homeowner the real responsibility. So if the dock's under repair, we have a SARM come through, the homeowner should be responsible, you know, the works need to be done.
So we still have an issue with the lid that's kind of dangling. So, you know, again, it could easily be removed by the homeowner.
Right.
But that's why I asked you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Any citizens' comments, questions? Okay, thank you. All right, item four is the presentation of Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Jeffrey Davidson, Fire Team, Pinellas Suncoast. This Thursday, uh, June 18th, Miller Beach City Hall. We are hosting a hurricane and water safety expo right here, and it's gonna be from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. There will be vendors, there's gonna be a life checking giveaway, beach, and voting safety information. There'll be free barbecue. There'll also be a blood drive. I believe if you donate blood, you get a $20 gift card and a T-shirt and a wellness checkup and all kinds of things. It's gonna be a good day, good informational session, and we expect anticipating hundreds of people to be here throughout the communities. You know, it's Coach Barter with Miller Beach as well as Indian Rocks Beach. So that's gonna be the thing we'll report this evening here.
Did you say it was one to four?
It's from 1 to 6 p.m.
Six, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I want me to hit the static and this might be a little bit.
Trying not to talk so close.
Be so close. Can you all hear me okay?
Just go and breathe.
You should hear. I want to explain to the council and the citizens the EMS services that I have been pursuing for your city and providing out the, uh, the EMS enhancement that I requested to the county as it's budget season to add an additional EMS unit to service Bellar Beach. So that's the unit, I'll wait. There you go. Got time.
He's putting off my level of volume now.
I shut it off. It's the stranger again. I can talk about it if you want. So I wanted to provide for you an update on the EMS enhancements that are requested, which was to add an additional EMS unit to service Bellar Beach, Bellar Shore, and the northern end of Indian Rocks Beach. So since 2009, the county identified a response time gap, and that is mainly because there is a 5.6 mile gap between Fire Station 27 in Indian Rocks Beach and Fire Station 44 in Clearwater. We cannot meet the county response time meeting, which means you are not getting the services they deserve. The fire department has taken steps to build another fire station that the fire department is paying for with our revenues, which will be in the very northern end of Indian Rocks Beach and will be one and a half minute drive time to this location. It's gonna solve the historical problems that we've had. The only thing I was asking the county is to fund the paramedics for the union, which is what they do. I mean, every resident throughout the county pays .8875 mils to the county EMS fund, and that goes to fund paramedics. So the fire department is the first responders. They fund one paramedic per fire truck. And the amount of money that has been paid, this is kind of shocking. So when I looked at it and I put in for this because there's a response time gap, the solution is adding another truck, adding another unit into a station closer to Bellar Beach. And again, we're paying for the station. We're asking the county to pay for the personnel. That request was not even considered. It was not given to the county commissioners. It was unilaterally decided for whatever reason. I've asked three times, three weeks in a row, for an explanation as to how they, these members, uh, on their own, we came up with this decision to not put it in the council, uh, the commission members' hands. And I'm still waiting on that response. So with the .8875 mils that every single resident pays, this area, Bellar Beach, Bellar Shore, and Indian Rocks Beach is funded for one unit. That's Engine 27, okay? Those same areas, Bellar Beach, Bellar Shore, Indian Rocks Beach, those residents in 2022 paid $2,435,506 into the EMS fund, and we were only funded $689,000 to provide those services. Not even one-third of what the citizens pay. And there's an identified gap that needs to be addressed. I can tell you 100% I can show you. We've had calls and cardiac arrest where we cannot get an ambulance for 40 minutes, and that is absolutely unacceptable. Not in anybody's book, especially mine. Bellar Beach alone paid, not to the fire department, to the county EMS fund. Bellar Beach alone paid $1,360,375 last year, and you're not getting the services that you deserve. According to Pinellas County 2023 adopted annual operating capital budget, the county EMS fund has approximately $66 million in reserves and is projected to have $83.6 million in reserves in fiscal year 2028. Almost 40%, 39.8% reserves, $83.6 million. And we're asking for $1 million to fund two paramedics for an ALS transport unit that is desperately needed for this area. Your residents are paying a county EMS tax and you're not being funded. Again, the residents of this area who are funded for one unit have paid in over $2 million, and we were only funded $689,000. The county EMS response time compliance is seven minutes and 30 seconds 90% of the time. And I can tell you from EMS to this area, it's only meaning 80.61% of the time. When you come to all calls, not just EMS, it's in the seventies. Trying to fix that, okay? So a request was made for a funding to staff a transport people rescue unit and two paramedics to provide the EMS services that are needed into your city, and this request was not moved forward by EMS authority. It was not given to the Board of County Commissioners. I've asked three times for a written explanation as to why this demonstrated deed was not considered, and I still not received an answer. So I am urging you, it's budget season. I am urging you, please, contact your county administration as to why this request was not considered to be moved to the Board of County Commissioners. Your citizens deserve it. There's a gap in the system. It's been identified for, since 2009. However many years that is, a lot, and this is the solution, and the money's there. So why is it not happening? And this is what I'm facing, and I need your help. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you.
I appreciate.
Oh, I think it's off. Are we off?
We're, we're off.
He's got my phone there. I, I appreciate the email he sent out to all council. Maybe your city manager could publish that email on our website so all the citizens understand what I'm against. And you're due diligence by contact.
Um, you know, I, I left some of these on table over there, but I'll bring them up. I have six copies for you. This is the email addresses of the commissioners, so you don't have to look them up. But this is, this is, you know, I'm passionate about this. This is what I do for a living. I've been doing this for 35 years, and this is no joke. I think if, to see where we can't even get an ambulance at times, 40 minutes to a cardiac arrest, you're not surviving. You're not surviving in 10 minutes, right? So why are we here? And why are our citizens here in this area paying over $2 million, and we're being funded for one unit? There's a county resolution. It's the Resolution 09-37 that says EMS response zones, which there are two here, PS 43 and PS 44, which is Bellar Beach and Bellar Shore, should have an EMS unit in it. And that was not even considered, and I need your help.
So Chief, you referenced the EMS authority.
Yes.
Is that, and what was the, who they made up?
EMS authority is defined by the laws of Florida that were made in 1980, amended in 1989, which designates Pinellas County as the EMS authority, which means they have a lot of decision-making power. Now, there is a group officially, the authority is the Board of County Commissioners. But there was a group of a few people that made this decision. And there was processes that were supposed to take place. It was supposed to go to the EMS advisory council, which is why it's there. They're supposed to make recommendations for funding and service levels, and these decisions were to be made, and that meeting is not until June 23rd. So how does that happen? So when I ask for a request, I ask, please tell me how you came to these decisions. I'd like to know your decision matrix and what you used to establish that this was not worthy of being pushed forward to the decision makers. A week later, I didn't get a response. I emailed again. Oh, I'm sorry. I was busy. I'll get back to you soon as I can. And just Friday, which is the third time, three weeks later, just a further reminder, I'm waiting on a response. You know, this is not something that I take lightly. Uh, you know, it would be a difference if a service was being paid for and you were getting it, right? And of course, there are some areas that help other areas financially. That's the way it goes, right? If you're paying for a service, you have a demonstrated need for a service. You can, there's nowhere, anywhere else in this entire county that there's 5.6 miles between fire stations. And you come to the beaches, when you're only getting here by bridge, whether it be Drawbridge or, or Big Bridge or whatever, pedestrian traffic and two-lane roads and 30 miles an hour, we're not getting anywhere fast. There's times where we can't even get to a call because Gulf Boulevard is shut down, right? If there's an accident, we need, for example, and we need other resources that they can't get there without coming a different route or sending different units. So we have a geographical need. We definitely have a geographical, we are a barrier island, right? And there is a resolution by the county that needs to be considered. So.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You indicated that the Board of County Commissioners is not ready to be brought, run. Clearly, we all contacted them. They might ask about it, but who initiates that item if the general or is recommending it be brought before them?
That would be?
Contact them all, but it never gets brought for them. Then they don't have that opportunity at all.
Exactly. That would be the Department of Emergency and Safety Services. And if you go on the, the website, you'll see exactly the, the people in that division, who they are.
Do you have that disagreement yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you thought about attending the next commission meeting, bringing the president's, uh?
Yes.
Go there and please tell them?
Yes. Uh, the, the next, uh, the, the, actually, the budget hearings, which are not open for public comment, but those are, the date set out are June 14th, 15th, 16th, 21st, 22nd, and 23th. But that's county-wide. It hasn't been decided what, which one of those days is gonna be for EMS, but I'm absolutely going to be there. Absolutely. And I've set meetings. I've had three meetings with county commissioners already, and I'm gonna continue to follow up. But I'm, I'm fighting very hard for, for services here for you and for your residents because not only do they deserve it, but they're paying for it.
And just to recap, I think I could just reiterate that it's probably important to send those units quickly after meeting on budget from 14th. And maybe the day that they discuss the topic. So we should send emails out. And encourage residents to do the same. Anyone else have questions? I'll turn to the presidents. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? I'm trying to talk loud. I'll bring a microphone.
Just, just real quick, if you could put together just like a little mini flow chart. So you, you, I'm assuming it's an online form that you fill out for the request? Or is it simply, or is it a letter that you develop, and that is a request, and you send it to group or person A? So if you could let us know the exact people that are involved in that flow process. Again, we wouldn't have you go talk to the person, whoever they are.
That would help. I'll, I'll actually send you the, the actual request. And then I did a request, but then I had supplemental information that I wanted them to consider. Two other supplements, two different times, of things that I was putting together to show this is a dire need. So I'll get all those things to you. You have my email address. You can contact me. I have my phone numbers on there as well. Anytime you call or text me 24/7, or I'll, I'll answer the phone. Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. If I could, if you mind if I bring you some? Thank you.
Okay. Onto item five, uh, city attorney report.
Uh, as for city attorney report, uh, this is our first, and I think our last meeting happened just after the end of session. I've given you a summary, and I've since provided you some memoranda on, um, on enactments that specifically impact you both as elected officials and as a community. And I continue to work with your city manager on, um, how the city will adapt to some of the more, more recent regulatory adoptions. One bill we're still watching is Centiphal 170. It was passed, um, to my knowledge, not yet signed by the governor. That was the bill that requires us to do economic impact statements with ordinances and also changes the landscape for legal challenges. Another similar one is Centiphal 250, uh, which has a, in, in the follow-up to Hurricane Ian, that places some land use regulations and restrictions on communities within 100 miles. And that's, as I understand it, as the pro flies from the point of impact for Hurricane Ian, which was Cape Costa. About 98% of Pinellas County, I believe, falls within that 100-mile range. There might be a slight sliver up by Tarkham, but generally speaking, that would capture this area. Not yet signed by the governor either. That bill makes it so that any land use regulations that are more restrictive may be nullified if they are adopted within two years of the date of Hurricane Ian's impact, and that dates back to September 28th, 2022, so it would be retro act. How, how what is more restrictive is not defined. Fun things we may have to either litigate or defend against, whether here or in other communities. Otherwise, your man, your manager and I are quite literally in daily contact on various issues and action items going on in this county, I mean, in this community, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council? Any questions from the citizens? Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore.
My pleasure.
Okay, um, next city manager report. Kyle Ruefler.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, starting off with our budget, we're getting into the budget season. Uh, June 1st, the property advisor sent the estimate of the taxable values for our city. So it plugged us into the budget we were drafting. I set out on Friday, um, the budget, and I realize today that there's some parts of the capital projects, some pages that I need to get in there. So I was planning on.
Just talk a little louder. No one can hear.
I was planning on having, uh, the paper copy for you today, but I need to get those supplemental pages and then provide. So I'm hoping to have it tomorrow. So that's the meeting. Some one of our meetings. Next week, the full budget workshop, which is on the 19th. And, uh, yeah, so we usually have a work session on the 3rd, Monday of the month. That is our budget workshop. I wanted to, uh, if it's, uh, Monday, we want to do a work session this month. We want to do it immediately after the workshop, or if we'd like to push it to the next Monday, uh, which will be the 26th of June.
Patty, do we have, um, an agenda starting for the next workshop? Yes. Is it lengthy?
Yes.
I think it, what, is it five items at this time?
I think we're currently at about five, if we look at the page number. Uh, I know for one, uh, emergency manager was on there, Marina, which I'm pretty happy about. Oh, some charter changes. So some important stuff.
Yeah, okay. So we probably should do the budget workshop a different day.
The work session, so you think the work session...
Yeah, the work session, yeah. I was just saying, the budget workshop, we should do it a day different than the work session.
Yeah. So the workshop's set on the 19th, so the work session would have to be...
26th, that's what you're going to do?
Yeah.
So that would put us, we have a week out, if you guys are okay with that, or do you want to, what they do in the second day of the week of the 19th? I don't expect a second day to be... Monday, Tuesday work for everyone? No, Tuesday's off. Okay. What about 22nd, what about Thursday? Okay. Wednesday? Last day. Wednesday work for you? Thursday? Does that make sense? Is that for a few miles, 21st?
Yes.
Patty? I'm sorry, can you hear, 21st on Wednesday to 21st?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll do the work session on Wednesday, 21st, and the budget workshop on Friday.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Gulf Boulevard Underground Project. Again, we have locations of all the phases, one of which is south, Causeway Boulevard. We have all locations, we're putting it down except for one, which is right at the corner of Gulf Boulevard, Call of Boulevard. Duke is wanting to have everything set until we start piping the conduit through. Uh, the underground consultant of Florida is continuing to ask to get something out of this project, so we're trying to keep getting it moving, uh, again, we're kind of being held up by Duke Engineering, uh, through our progress reports. Uh, stormwater improvement projects, we, the survey, uh, is underway by George Schimpf and Associates. Um, they are collecting the survey of future projects. They're in the streets, um, they were just down here on Ninth Avenue, or Ninth Street recently. Um, as they get the street survey, they're sending it over to the engineer, so we're not waiting for it all to get done, they're getting it over and he's starting to design. So once he, once he starts getting some preliminary designs together, um, I'd like him to sort of come in and present them to the council with questions. The Marina Dock renovation, we went out to bid, um, for the, uh, replacement of the pilings and the cleaning and wrapping of the ones that didn't need to be replaced. The project only had one sealed bid, and it was for $75,000 to retire than expected. Currently, we have $52,000 saved for the dock improvements in the Marina fund. Uh, being that it's such a chunk of, uh, expense, I'd like to bring it to the work session to discuss, um, some other options, because, you know, it's significant amount of money. It may, in the way, we either decided no, or we might want to look at doing more, um, at a later date, if we accumulate more money, um, to make sense of where, what our vision for Marina is. So I just wanted to discuss that. Um, we just recently got, um, a small amount, but, uh, close to $5,000 back for our, um, sandbagging efforts for Ian. So we got some money back, that was part of our expense, so it took a little bit, but I'm happy to save another check. Um, the, uh, we put some five iron over there at the playground, so that's, uh, looking nice and wrapped up. The, uh, while I was out there, it brought back to my mind that there's a four block, or a walk that goes from Bayside down to the beach area. Um, it, it's getting in a, um, just deteriorated condition. My thoughts are, it's not even necessary to have. I would recommend moving it, um, because I don't think it's worth falling to replace. I don't know how many feels about that.
Didn't we have two work walks over there? There was one here, then one down to the side?
There's an observation.
Observation down there?
Yeah. You know, that's still a big condition. This one is much older. Um, what it does is it walks out, um, to the center and then steps down, but it's...
My only concern is, is it important for the rental of this facility, like two people, if they're using, do they use it for photographs or things like that? That might take away from, um, the amenities that we have that would help the, uh, the whole...
Sure. My gut feeling is no, um, just because of the condition it's been in, and, um, citizens have been common, uh, security, so I would say no. I could check on that. I feel, you know, you take it out, you still have the passage down to the beach, I can't see any, uh, other means of, of getting, or reasons to should be there.
Do you have any comments, though?
I haven't seen it personally, but I'll go take a look. I do want to take a look.
Any citizens' comments regarding the boardwalk at Bayside Park? Just to try to hear my ideas. I'd like to hear if there's any feedback. I'm sorry? I'd like to hear if there's any feedback from anyone, if they think, what they think about it. It seems to me that if you don't provide a prescribed place for people to walk, they'll walk wherever, and that there might be additional erosion or deterioration of the dunes and mangroves if people have just left and wandered anywhere. People do direct traffic that way across the boardwalk.
I'm sorry, ma'am, just for the record, would you mind stating your name and address?
Of course. Kim Shaw Elliott, 121 Ninth Street.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
So they will put it, put it aside and go ahead and download it, just walk it back.
Yeah, we'll talk about it in the work session.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the next council meeting is on July 3rd, July 4th is Tuesday, and I want to check if we want to figure on that date, or considering moving it, uh, being the holiday here.
Council, do you have any feedback on that?
Yeah, actually, possible, because, uh, we had a topic on the fourth. Fourth was on Tuesdays and Mondays. If we don't have it, we can, we can afford it.
Everyone's in agreeance with moving the council meeting to July 10? Yes, okay. Well, that's fine, under your recommendation.
Thank you. Um, okay, the floor.
Thank you, Kyle.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the Marina Dock renovation, so did we, for that type of a project, did we have a pre-bid meeting?
Yes.
How, how many showed up in pre-bid meeting?
I had three contractors.
Okay, and only one actually submitted the bid?
Yes.
Okay.
We had one that submitted, it wasn't a sealed, it was a sealed estimate for a total remodel, but it didn't gotten our bid.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Kyle, I know we're very limited on staff, uh, of course, but Ford Beach cleaned up this past weekend, uh, other residents, helpful residents addressed me about getting our beach rate more often. I don't know how we're going to do it now, and I think we'll only ever see it once, uh, by January 9th or 10th here. I think, I think we'll do it, I think we'll do it twice a year.
It's three times, or after a storm that washes in, seeing as we're...
Um, is there any way we can increase that level? I mean, uh, I don't know what the limitations are, I have no personnel, our city do it, I mean, there's other people that volunteer to do it, I don't know that Frenchies or personnel manual or whatever, I've talked to them. We have machinery, I mean, I guess the biggest caveat here is the dump in other ways, you know, as well as...
Yeah, currently, we, we drag it, we drag it down to the water, the water case again.
Yeah.
Time. So it's an annual thing, it's in February, in plaid automatically to the state. Um, like I said, we put in for triennially and after major storms. Um, I have the dates that we're going to see here, in travel. Um, I can check with them what's required to, uh, the frequency.
We use our personnel...
Yes.
...security...
And now that we don't have very much beach, it goes pretty quickly, so it doesn't make it good.
I noticed that sharing...
We're an hour.
Yeah.
Every day.
Um, so yeah, let me start with the state to find out if they want to increase the frequency, the impact of the area, the frequency.
So approximately, how long does that task take?
Okay, so like right now, I would say a couple hours.
Okay.
Back when we had Nurshment, and we had a big beach, you know, it would take almost a little bit. Um, you just had the bottom, so you got to be down to maybe 15% or so.
Okay, right.
Just a quick question, will we break the beach for doing Beller Shores and Beller Beach, is that correct?
We start with Beller Beach, um, but again, we're working on that other shore, they're telling us to break it.
Well, that's something we've talked about at the end of the work session.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kyle. Hi, do you have a report for us, please?
I just have one item that I wanted to let you know, the Planning and Zoning Board is going to meet on June 14th to review City Attorney Mora's draft signed...
Draft signed what?
I'm sorry. The sign ordinance.
Sign ordinance, okay, thank you. Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, next, we're moving on to the consent agenda, items eight, nine on the agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to reset the consent agenda, I should be...
Okay, motion second, okay. So, any discussion? Citizens' comments? All of y'all?
Aye.
Is that the agenda passes? Um, okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Item 10 is consideration of ordinance 23-03. Mr. Mora, would you like to read this ordinance, please?
Happily, Madam Vice Mayor. One moment, please. This is ordinance 23-03, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, mending the City of Beller Beach Comprehensive Plan pursuant to the evaluation and appraisal process of Section 163.319 Florida statutes and the amendment process of Sections 163.3184 Florida statutes, adopting the goals, objectives, and policies and maps as presented here and below, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinance and conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading of ordinance 23-03 on first reading by Madam Lomond.
Okay, do we have a motion? Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Remember, not a motion, remember, Livingstone seconded.
Thank you, that, oh, sorry.
Was it going to be a presentation?
Yes. So with that, we're prepared to go to staff presentation.
Good evening. Are they...
Can everyone turn off their mics? I'm going to try and turn this one on. See.
Thank you. I'm a low talker by nature, so I appreciate this.
He's getting the mic going, he's trying to get the speaker still.
Diane?
Hello?
There you go.
Thank you. Uh, so, good evening, it's nice to be here. Um, my name is Linda Fisher, I work for Ford Penalis. Um, you probably know us best as a countywide agency that coordinates transportation planning. We also work with land use. Um, but wearing another hat, we also provide technical assistance to local governments. Uh, in particular, we do a lot of comprehensive plan updates. So that's the hat I'm wearing tonight, I'm here to help you update your comp plan. Um, just as a reminder, uh, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to provide a policy basis for the regulations that the city adopts and the decisions that you make. In particular, it governs land use. The plan establishes a set of future land use categories that, uh, establish where different land uses can go in the city and how densely the land can be developed. From a state perspective, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to help regulate the growth of your community. Um, but for a stable community like yours, the purpose is really to maintain the quality of life that you have. Uh, you do need to update your comp plan every seven years, and to make sure that your policies are still current, and to stay up to date with any changes to stay well. You also have to update the maps and data that support your plan, and any terminology or references that change over time. And this is also your opportunity to add or update any local policy priorities as you see fit. And there's a defined process. The draft amendments need to be reviewed by your designated local planning agency, which in your cases, your planning and zoning board. Uh, your board has done that, they held a public hearing on May 8th, and voted to recommend that the city council approve the draft that's in front of you. Uh, and now it's your turn to review and consider the draft amendments. Um, so this is the first, the two public hearings that you're required to hold for this process. If you vote to approve the amendments, then the next step will be to transmit them to the state for review, and I'll talk more about that during the presentation. Uh, but first, let's take a step back and talk about what's in this draft. What would be changing from your current comprehensive plan? Well, the first and most important group of amendments are to, uh, address three new state laws that have been passed since you last updated your plan. The first is what's called the Parla Flood Act, passed in 2015, and it requires you to adopt strategies that address the risks of flooding, hurricanes, and sea level wars. And there's specific languages that you need to adopt. Uh, so the draft amendments include a number of new objectives and policies to address the new law. However, you're a beach community, so you've been addressing these issues forever, you already do this. So it's really just a matter of spelling out all the kind of strategies that you already practiced. And you follow state coastal construction codes, and coastal setback requirements, FEMA flood planning recommendations, you participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, and so forth. So, um, all I did in this draft is state the things you already do and put it in your either draft amendment. Another new law that was passed last year is called the Private Property Rights Act. Uh, this law is really largely symbolic. Um, it requires you to adopt a new private property rights element in your comprehensive plan, and the statute provides a, a specific language addressing what people legally elected to do with their land. It requires you to respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights. In other words, it's acknowledging rights that already exist, it's not creating new Those existing rights state that the government cannot take a person's land, and that the property owner has the right to use and control their land, but it is subject to state law and local ordinances, so, uh, and that includes your comprehensive plan and your zoning code. So it's also acknowledging your right as a city to practice reasonable land regulation. The last of the new laws is one that doesn't have an immediate impact on the city, but I included it for due diligence, in case it should apply in the future. It's called the Live Local Act, and it was just signed back in March. It allows certain affordable housing developments to override some... It allows certain affordable housing developments to override some local comprehensive land zoning regulations. Uh, it only applies to land zoned for commercial, industrial, and mixed use, which don't currently have in the city. Um, but I drafted a policy that just acknowledges that the law exists. That way, if your, uh, if your land designations could change, should change in the future, or if the state law changes in a way to make it apply to the city, then, uh, you're not in conflict. Uh, as noted on the slide, I do need to correct a statutory reference, uh, in the policy. Uh, I inadvertently referenced an identical statute that applies to counties, so I just need to update that to the one that governs cities. Do you have any questions so far about these, these three laws? Thank you. So those are the minimum policy amendments that need to be included in your plan. Now, your planning and zoning board held a series of meetings between January and May to review the draft plan, and I want to commend your board for being very engaged and thoughtful throughout the entire process. Not every city has that, uh, so they were a pleasure to look at. They did a technical review of the draft, uh, plan, and they also voted to make some recommendations to you for updated policy priorities. Highest priority issue that they identified is the high volume of traffic that passes through the city due to higher density redevelopment and tourism from your neighborhood communities. While that's not a problem that we can solve with a comprehensive plan update, uh, this is your place to identify actions that you take, that you would take that might come. And that includes things like using the Forward Pannellis forum to work, uh, directly with those other local governments and Pannellis County. Uh, for example, uh, you could explore, uh, whether there are options for traffic control measures, either technological or law enforcement, and that can make it easier for your residents to exit from their local streets on the boulevard. Um, and, uh, it would also be a means to seek funding to pay for those measures. We also talked about making sure Forward Pannellis has accurate data that takes into account that your offshore patterns are different, uh, from the mainland. Years are driven by tourism, not nine to five commuters. And we can't use the same one-size-fits-all approach that we use for the rest of the year. Uh, the board recommends that the city consider designating a specific representative or even attendee to reach out and work with Forward Pannellis, uh, to, um, to work for addressing these issues. The next issue that the board identified was the importance of the Beller Beach Marina right. Your current plan has a policy providing for the potential redevelopment of the Marina with residential uses in the future, and, uh, the board recommends deleting that policy and replacing it with others that recognize the Marina's importance to the city, to declare that, uh, the, the city desires to keep the Marina as a Marina and to prioritize it as much as possible for the enjoyment of city residents. And then the last major group of recommended policy additions, uh, concerns cost savings and additional funding sources, uh, through things like seeking grants, state local transportation funding, and even potentially the use of other local resources, including solar panels. So those are the planning and zoning board recommendations. So now it is the council's decision whether to accept those recommendations or to make any further changes to the draft amendments. If you vote to approve the draft at this first hearing, then two things happen next. The document will need to be transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, which is the state agency charged with reviewing the comp plan amendments, and copies will need to be sent to a number of other state and regional agencies and the local governments that are immediately adjacent to you, who will all have the option to weigh in. Uh, my experience is that virtually none of those people will actually weigh in, uh, but they have thirty days to do it. Uh, and then overlap with that same time period, D E O has, um, sixty days, uh, to review the plan. Once they are done with their review, they will issue what's called an objections, recommendations, and comments report, or court, court, court. And if they feel that anything that you proposed doesn't meet state law or needs a technical review, then they'll let you know. Typically, we get one or two very minor comments, just wanting us to update citations or clarify something. So that's usually not, not a lot to it. The city has a hundred and eighty days to respond to the org. Again, I don't think it will take that long. Once you make changes, then you hold a second public hearing to officially adopt the updated comprehensive plan. It goes back to D E O. They have another forty-five days to review. And unless there is a citizen challenge, um, then it becomes, uh, becomes effective as soon as they issue their notice that, uh, that they found it compliant. Uh, so there is a built-in process where citizens can challenge a comp plan update, but I've been doing this for twenty-five years and I have literally never seen it happen. So you don't think that's a major risk? And that is your comprehensive plan update process. If there are any questions, we have the answer.
Council, any questions? No? Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there, um, any citizens' comments? Citizens have any questions or comments? Okay, Patty, do you need to do the roll call bonus?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Vable?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-three dash oh three passes. Um, moving on to item eleven, consideration of resolution two zero two three dash oh three. Attorney Mora, would you like to read that, please?
Aye. Two three dash oh three was just read.
Two, two zero two three dash oh three. So resolution.
Okay, sorry, the resolution. Sorry, getting out of the materials. Apologies. Resolution twenty-two three dash zero three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to switch financial institutions, authorizing signatures which are to appear for all city check and draft writing, and instructing any financial institution to accept any certified copy of this resolution as evidence of legal authority over city financial accounts, resolving conflicts therewith, and establishing an effective date. This is the first and only reading of resolution twenty-two three dash zero three by time alone.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Notaro. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Dave. Any discussion? Anything from the citizens? Anyone like to speak on this? Back to council. Okay, um, nothing further than all in favor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor? Does that give a roll call bonus?
Roll call, that? Sure. Okay, sorry.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Vable?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item twelve, consideration of equipment in the planning and zoning board. We also have an application from Ken Shawn Elliott. Uh, Ms. Elliott, would you like to speak to council?
I had planned on it, but I would be honored to be able to serve on this committee. I have, I'm a attorney by background, so hopefully I can bring some skills to this organization, as well as the fact that I have served on similar committees in my prior home, and I'm looking for opportunities to be of better service to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we're fortunate that we've got her.
I would agree. I'd put it great. Very impressive. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Okay, item thirteen, consideration to approve the Adopt a Park Program Agreement of the City of Beller Beach. This is in association with the Beller Beach Community Foundation, and, um, Mr. Refords could give a presentation on this, but do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Second? Thank you. Kyle?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, so this is an agreement, um, to enable, uh, verification programs within the city, and, uh, it's, was worked out with the Beller Beach Community Foundation, uh, and the agreement allows for businesses, churches, schools, neighborhood, civic groups, or even, uh, just individual residents to give back to community parks, uh, and by donating amenities, planting plants, um, kind of lays out, uh, time cables, so based on what the, uh, individual group is donating, uh, kind of sets up the, the time period for, for that adopted program. All the adoption ideas, programs, uh, will be submitted, uh, and approved by the city. Uh, so as they come in, we'll, uh, we'll assess them and find out if it's, uh, something doable and how we'll, we'll do the program. Uh, the, uh, Beller Beach, Beller Beach Community Foundation, uh, the donations, uh, monetary donations, they also have, uh, work with them to cover, um, say, the money that you present, that should be, um, but it goes through the foundation to enable the donator to, uh, have a tax write-off. So that's all, we're working the function with them. The, uh, city, uh, once the park is adopted by a group, individuals, uh, the city will put up a sign saying, uh, this is for, it's, it's a leadership program, and that will be by such and such for this period of time. Um, we continue to talk about responsibility to the city and responsibility to the adopted parties. They're kicking to do things that the city does as far as, uh, you know, mowing, trimming the trees, uh, you know, anything, planting and gardening, all the, all the things that we should be doing, uh, on a routine basis. And then the adopting party, depending on what they decide to do, will, um, you know, contribute funds, though if they want to put together an updated, uh, declared garden bed area, puts new plants in, in, in work with them. Um, and then, you know, light work, if they, if they want to maintain some sort of garden bed, and they want to stop by every two weeks and make sure it's free, means that would be their goal. Um, but the idea is, um, again, to just allow the community to help improve parks throughout the city, for a lot of many areas in Florida. And, um, we brought this to the Park Recreation Advisory Board, and they're in support of it, and it's really helping to enhance the parks. And, uh, we're, we're viewing it under our city authority. Mr. Mora?
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Um, council, any questions?
That's good. Great.
Uh, any resident questions? Okay, so with no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go, Kyle. Thank you. All right, item fourteen, any unfinished business? Okay, city council comments? Leslie, we'll start with you, but just break down the line. Patty?
Uh, just want to thank Kimberly Shaw and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Last month, I was discussing about, um, flood insurance problems, wind insurance, and I just put on a flood mitigation board. I attended my first meeting this past month. It was mostly about flood risks, getting information out of surrounding communities that are fogged, portion of search, what surveys and how it occurs, where it starts, and, uh, the risk of flooding, and flood insurance probably the thing. Um, I've also been in contact, as I noted, with Senator Scott's office, his late match year regarding FEMA two point oh. I was under the impression that Ian was going to live past this area, even though it didn't impact this area with flood costs, which it is. Just got notified today that another private shore, uh, flood risk is leading state, so they're all telling us to go to N I P. Senator Scott is trying to introduce legislation this month to get more private shores back into the market. Our state senator's been the same thing last December with wind insurance, could cause nothing but a mess. Uh, these problems really aren't that hard to resolve. Back in nineteen hundred, there was a town a little bit west of Wisconsin experiencing a cat fire hurricane. Blanked out the whole town. But two years later, they built three mile seawall, extended it over the years to ten miles. Now, that seawall was five, I mean, fifteen feet and five. I'm not saying we need seventeen foot seawall, but we should be investing our money because it is, it didn't cost the federal government four billion dollars just for that one school. So I went to Senator Scott, I said, why don't we take that money and invest in storm wreckage, catch bases, pumps, seawalls, instead of just pumping out money to repair the stones that get washed away every year or whatever like that? Well, I don't know if that would resonate to the taxpayers, but we can just keep spending cash foolishly, in my opinion, and isn't going to do that any good. So sadly, today, I was finally given information because I've been having this two point oh, just give my constituents, your constituents, Mr. Scott, some explanation on where the city discount of twenty percent we receive, along with somebody submitting an elevation certificate and the adjacent grade. Now, adjacent grade is the bottom grade of the ground, okay? So your street is generally an adjacent grade. Okay, you're showing your yard, dig down, you'll find sand about a foot down, okay? So that dirt wasn't here originally. It came in when they built the houses, so you have that bridge and stuff like that. Anyway, no one could show me where there's adjacent grade discounts are. So now I was given a layover, but I was told to fill out a form, uh, what was it called? This is just more, I, I can see why Chief Davidson gets so upset with the gun. Um, it was, it was a form that, so I can privacy act and set forth this story. So I feel like I'm just going back around this very ground sort of problem. I guess the right word is, one of the residents here would speak. But the other thing I wanted to mention was, I visited Morgan Park Saturday, the morning weekend, and Sunday, and I know we got a lot of flack about raising the rates. There wasn't one parking spot to go to from eleven o'clock.
Thank you. Mr. Dave?
Nothing.
Okay, nothing for me either, but thank you all for coming out, enjoying the rest of the meeting tonight, and, uh, have a good week. Do I have a motion or a call?
Motion.
Second?
You did a good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.